Are we recording?
Yes.
There we go. Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Public Utilities Commissioner meeting for Thursday, June 13th, 2024. The time now is 3:33 PM. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public input. Do we have members of the public? Do we have any public input?
I actually have this under correspondence.
You have this in correspondence? Okay. So next up, correspondence. So we have the information on the summer summit, upper pump station electric delta.
Yeah, I can briefly start out and Bill O'Halloran, who's with the association, is on the call. But basically, it seems like we have it resolved already at this point. But I wanted to give you the background for it. Briefly, it looks like mistakenly, the account that was in our name that we took over from Toll Brothers, got moved over from our name to the Summit Master Association mistakenly with other accounts that they were moving over to their name. This happened, I think it was July or August of 22. So we were paying the bills and of course, finance gets whatever, 30 ever-source bills. That bill never was showing up. No one was ever chasing it down. I think the summit was paying it and then they realized, what is this account? So long story short, they pointed it out that it's, it got moved to their name, should be in ours, which is correct. So the bottom line is, we coordinated with ever-source. They're going to get the account moved back into our name, so we'll start getting the bills again. They are going to issue a credit to the summit and then they're going to do some kind of adjustment on the rest of that whole balance to us. So it seems like we have it resolved. I think they're doing the check to the summit. We just got an email today. They said they'll probably cut that check in the next couple of weeks. So Bill O'Halloran had been the one that contacted us. He's on the line. So Bill, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it happened. We were moving accounts over. I have no idea. We've looked up and down. We can't find any record of how we got hold of that account. Somehow, that got mixed into accounts we were rightly taking over from Toll Brothers. There were our streetlight accounts. No one can figure out how that got mixed in with them all. But we took it over. Ever-source apparently didn't follow their procedure, which is to contact the present owner of an account.
Which should have been us.
Right. And people taking it over, which is us. We initiated the change. Sorry. Very impressed with how quickly you all stepped up and even ever-source. This has been resolved amazingly quickly from our point of view. And we greatly appreciate the cooperation, both you folks in the town and ever-source, actually. And it is resolved. The last information we received was this afternoon. It's resolved from our point of view entirely. So thanks very much. In fact, I had a board meeting yesterday with all, you know, with our residents, explained what happened and ever-source and the town of Bethel got a rousing hand of applause.
Well, thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. We're pretty sure it doesn't happen again. So you might want to change the heading on that account. It looks like it's one of our accounts. It says 32 Upper Great Hill Drive. That's not where that meter is. It's on the pump house.
Well, the U is usually for utility, so.
No, 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 no. Every one of our streetlight accounts, if you look for the meter, it's on a residential building. And it's the, if it's a quad, a building with four units in it, it'll say 122 Great Hill. Is it 122 Great Hill Upper? There's four meters and then there's another meter, an upper meter, next to it where they just randomly stuck a streetlight meter. To us, that's what that means. Maybe I'm wrong. It's not at 32 Gray Hill Drive. It's on the pump house.
Okay, okay.
But whatever. We won't be taking it again, I promise.
We might not give it back. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for the cooperation and the quick service. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from regular meeting of May 9th, 2024 to a second. Any questions or discussion about the minutes? So you know, if I remind, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Because you were good. Okay. Motion carries. Financial report.
All right. So if you look at the summary sheet here, water revenue is $1.4 million more than the expenses at this time. And sewer revenue is $138,000 more than the expenses. On the sewer side, the collection is even higher than the. Sewer actual collections is $3.4 million. But the collections always outpace the billing. He does the way the assessment. The only issue is, but in time, I kind of went through it when we were going through the budget. All right, it's the MIUs. We know, you know, you guys, the board approves. Exceeding the budget line there, you get the MIUs done. And the only thing, other thing that we're watching financially is what the MIUs, all the MIUs are doing to the billing. Seems like there, in the last billing, there's still a lot of adjustments. And we'll talk about that when we talk about the budget, but it's, now that we've replaced all those MIUs, we're getting actual reads. You know, it didn't look like there's anything big. Surprise, it's just a lot of adjustments that we got from all of it, so. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. We're at a good place, especially since there's one month left in the year. So that's the controller reports.
Okay, invoices. Okay, I move we approve the invoice as listed for a total of $699,356.68. Wait a second. Okay, discussion. Anything comment?
It's the typical invoices we've been seeing. The bulk of that is the COVAX construction for the Bertram project over last month. And then we have the Wright Pierce for construction admin, the Wright Pierce for skated design, and the sub-area 13 work that was done through Western Sampson.
The only other thing we should probably talk about in invoices that Brad should mention, financial report, is Tom heard back from Danbury last week, right?
And I heard back again at this meeting. We should be getting a bill from them finally.
Yeah. So they haven't sent us a bill. Should we get it in September or October every year? They had some staffing issues. We still haven't got that bill, so, but.
We don't expect it.
I think he was anticipating it. I think we had in the budget nine, nine fifty, 950,000. I think he was expecting it to be about 987. It's going to be a little bit more than what I had.
So we'll have that on the next one, right?
Yes.
Hopefully. Finally.
Yep.
Okay. Any additional discussion on the invoices? Okay, without fire your minds, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Yeah, the budget amount is 950.
Okay. Awesome. So new business, we have consideration of acceptance of a sewer main relating to a property of Steiner. So we'll go ahead and table that because the maps are not ready. All in favor, I think that's all of it, right? All in favor of Caden going to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, actually, I apologize. The motion is not in order. I move that we table item number one in a new business. Wait a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Director, I'm sorry. Water and sewer budgets for 2025?
I had a question.
Other sewer budgets?
No, we're ahead of Steiners.
We probably should wait because I have no idea what. No, we're waiting on the maps from those guys.
They weren't ready. Melanie wanted to put it on there in case they were ready.
We're hoping, but yeah. Okay.
Do you want to kick it off on the budget time? Yeah, the budget, we submitted it last month for discussion. I think there's a couple of items. Mainly the revenue, I think, that we had, Brad and I had to kind of look at a little closer. And so at this point, as we've done each year, we've got our proposed water and sewer budgets. Really, I guess, we'll start with water and I'll put it back to you, Brad, to start going through the first part.
I think, I don't think water, we did anything, at least expense-wise. Sewer, we had an adjustment on utility. But so for water, when we were looking at the revenue, based on projections from, or the actual numbers that Paul had done for the billings, the water use looks like it is down a little bit from the 2.5 that we put in the budget. Collection-wise, we've collected over the 2.5. So with the billings being below it, the collections being over it, even when we put the eight and a half percent on the water rates, it still looked a little bit lower, but we're still dealing with such a small period of time since some of these MIUs are done. A lot, a good chunk of them are only one rate. So at this time, and based on what our expenses are, we're leaving well enough alone with the water. It was also a really wet year last year, so people doing irrigation did a lot less irrigation. So conservatively, if we left the revenue number alone, and we hope it exceeds it, based on the eight and a half percent increase, we still were to the good budget-wise with the transfer out of $6,600. So we didn't want to set an unrealistic revenue number based on now we have all these MIUs. So we kept it right where the current year budget is. And if it's a dry year and water use goes up because of it, billing-wise will exceed it by a lot. We have another really wet year. We might come in under. It's, you know, and how many people conserve and all that stuff.
Well, in July, you're going to actually get a true reading of what revenue will be with all these meters, but checks are actually, you're going to know what your revenue is. You were working with estimated bills for the past two years.
Yeah, the problem is.
You know what I'm saying? So once in July comes along, you're going to get true readings, so you actually know better what your income's going to be.
Yeah. A year from now, we're going to be sitting here going, we know exactly what it looks like in the year that we have.
Then you'll have that many more quarters of actual reads that are posted now, just the most recent.
And some of those estimates were probably high. Anybody that irrigates were probably high based on a normal irrigation year. But if it was really wet last summer, they didn't irrigate as much. So yeah, it's all about data points and having all those estimate numbers in there for a while. Some of these, I think, were over a year old, right? The estimates?
Yeah, but you had a different, but you had a different figure. You're saying next I count that year, then the revenue went up, right? You're getting more, so. At July, you should actually know that you'll figure.
So we went, when we were looking at it, even though we know the rate's going up, we went super conservative and said, let's keep it flat. We don't need to like, the expenses come in, it's like where we're at, keeping it flat right now. Because this was supposed to be the year water-wise, that we're going to have a surplus, a bigger surplus, because we haven't started paying for Bertram yet. So instead of having a bigger revenue number in here and a higher transfer out number, we just kept it flat and then hopefully a year from now, we're going. You know what? We were super conservative and the number's really 2.7 in revenue. So, but because the expenses pretty much match without having to bump the revenue number up, we go, let's just, let's get more data before we change it.
The only question I have is, on the revenue part, you said this when I was trying to catch up, we added 10,000 penalties. You know, that seems like a big jump.
So it's just based on, we didn't always use to break that out. So a couple of years ago, I came on, I started breaking out the penalty piece. And so once we started breaking it out, I started at last year 20 being, let's just put a number in there because we did whatever. And this was the same, you'll see sewer, we adjusted up too. If I adjust the 30, it means our actuals last year was probably 55.
That's what I was going to ask.
So I stay, so I actually said this to our auditor the other day. My stance on revenues, slow to increase on terms, quick to decrease if there's an issue, right? Like, so if I'm moving up to 30 in penalties, it means I think we're probably going to get closer to 35, 40. But I don't want to be chasing our tail on it and go.
Kelsey, there's a message.
So, yeah, so we're just, it's data points in time. So I move penalties up going, the last couple of years we've exceeded 30, there's really no harm going to there.
All right. So you base it more on actual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I could be sitting here a year from now going, last year, we did, we're 25, we, that would be 25. We did 25, so I need to adjust it down, but use went way up. So permits and installations, I kept flat, but I think we've exceeded that number.
So when we go to approve this, do we have to approve the revenue too or just the budget?
I think we just approve the budget, the revenue part of it.
Cool. Any further questions or discussion? Pretty straightforward.
It is.
So just, so penalties through 11 months was 33,758. So, and permits are through 11 months is 18,600. So I think we're going to hit the 20, so I left it up.
Okay. Outstanding. Thank you.
Just a question from Tom. The capital projects, are they included in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a separate sheet off to the.
Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
If you, if I look on the page two of the budget, I have a contracted services capital. And that 5,617 shows up there and it's outlined on that separate sheet.
We're replacing a water main on Elgin Avenue for $12,500.
Yeah. It's just like a 50-foot section. I guess we replaced it previously up to a valve, which is off a diamond, and the piece that crossed diamond, for whatever reason, didn't get replaced at that time. Bob is now redoing the road, so we threw a number in there to, I think I threw $250 a foot.
It said it was. You can't buy the pipe for that price.
It seems low. I got it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So I move that we approve the 2024, 2025 budget in the amount of $8,117,000. Wait a second. Further discussion?
Second. All right, for more discussion?
Sure.
What about the MIUs? Do we need to put more money into the MIUs in the budget?
Well, we bumped last year's budget. We bumped it from 20 to 40.
Right.
We hammered away at doing many, many of them this past year. I think we caught up on a lot of the backlog, so that's why we went well over. So I just decided to leave the 40 that we bumped it to last year flat. We got it, we're down to less than 200 MIUs. We were at like 1,100.
Well, we still have double the budget now that we originally started with last year, right?
Wow. Two years ago was 20.
Yeah.
For 24's budget, it went to 40. And then you far exceeded it because you brought it to the outset.
So we're staying with the 40.
I'm staying with the 40, correct, on both sewer and water. So we actually have 80.
Okay.
All right, in total.
Got you. Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, with that, I'll fire your minds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Looking over the sewer budget.
Sewer, we had an issue that we put in the wrong amount for utilities. So we fixed that. On the bottom of the first page, for some reason, I copied over to the water amount.
For heating oil.
For heating oil. So heating oil, initially, the first draft you had said 20,000. It's down to 2,000 because Paul Street is now on natural gas. So that's on heating oil. So that's why you see other utilities went from 1,000 to 5,000. So we're going to charge the natural gas, but the other utility, the heat heating oil, it's low. I think it just, some of the smaller, is it just you? Eureka's the water, so that's why water's still hot.
Correct.
Because that's a big building.
Eureka and Chesnut.
Sewer just has one of the pump houses that has heating oil.
Um, no. I don't think we're using any heating oil on sewer other than a generator for Paul Street.
Yeah.
And the electricity is based on the new agreement that we have, right? We've locked in?
So electric's been locked in is through December 31st of 25.
Okay.
So this is our old rate. So next year, when we're talking about electric, don't be surprised when it's up. Because right now, we're looking at locking in the out years. Because you only lock in up to five years out. We're currently locked in 18 months out, but we're looking, because the rates have come down a little bit, not as low as we're currently locked in at. So we're looking now, starting the process of trying to lock up the other 42 months that aren't locked in. But it just, the electric's going to be up 25% next year.
25? That's with their.
Well, right now, we're locked in around numbers, eight cents per kilowatt hour. I think if we could lock in the out years at 10, we'd probably jump out of it. Because 10 is a good number right now. And you're probably paying 13, 14 a year, you know, whatever. But we're, we started that process, but it takes a while because we're getting a couple vendors to give us prices on it. But to get a couple vendors, we had to pull 60 electric bills, get copies off to the vendor and do a good thing to do. Because I think it's, I think Tom said like 30, but I think the town between water, sewer and everything else in schools is like 60.
Now, do you do the same thing with your natural gas project, uh, prices?
So natural gas, we're locked in. Trying to remember, I think we're locked in through December of 25 also. And that came down from our last lock-in. Our last two lock-ins for natural gas were $1.77 per ton, $1.23 per ton. And what we're locked in now from like January 1 of 25 through December of 25, it might be December 1 through November, it's just under a box. So that started to come back down. So, but that's, you guys didn't ride the big wave because water sewer didn't have natural gas until Paul Street. Right. But the town totally rode that wave because that was natural gas.
Oh, is this part of the town's contract?
Yes. Yeah. It's all of our utilities fault under the town with that. And then if it's a utility bill, we just, when it comes in, we charge just the utility account. But when we do this pricing, we look at everything as a whole. If you guys had to go out and shop for natural gas on your own, you would do as well, but you know, when we lump you in the school buildings and this building, you'd much better. If you'd like me to break it out, you know, I will for you.
No, no, no.
I think I'd like you to break it out for you.
So that was like the only real expense change I think we made up, right?
Yeah, just those two.
And on the revenue side, we had this issue since I took over, well, even before that, when Podolski was the controller. When we used to run this report with just what we collected. And then when I took over and I started doing the controller report, the auditors wanted us to put what we billed on our reports. And then I added under the bottom of that, collected by the tax collector. So looking at the May finance report, we billed out just over $3 million for sewer. We collected 3.4. And the big difference there is the sewer assessments. So sewer assessments, budget-wise for the year we're in, was $1.2 million. The actual is just under 400,000. Collected is 1.35. So what we've been doing over the last, what I've been doing with the last couple of budgets for sewer is trying to get in the billing, in the budget, closer to the actual billing now. But that's why you see in the budget numbers, sewer assessment went from 1.2 to 850. It was 1.5 when I took over. So last year, we went down 300,000. This year, we're going down another 350, trying to get closer to that actual number of 400,000. At some point with the sewer assessments, the money's going to stop coming in from that. Because I think the last one was finished around when I started 13 years ago. So there was a sewer assessment, I think they're 20-year assessments, are, were done 11, 12 years ago when we started billing for. And some people have just paid the balance off, so they didn't pay the interest on it. So what we bill out now has been dropping every year. So instead of going, let's just pretend the number's still high because we're collecting high, we're bringing that number down. So we're still going to collect what we're going to collect. And until the sewer assessment money is all paid in, our collections are always going to outpace our, what we bill. But at some point, the billing, we're going to not have assessments. So at some point, we're going to only be on use. So we're trying to drive towards that number now. But we're not trying to overreact and overcorrect because we know the money's still coming in. So that's why over the last two years, we're driving it down. And sewer use, we lowered from 3,500,000 last year to 2,850,000. Some of that is, that's closer to the actual. So through 11 months, what we build out for sewer use is $2.5 million. That number will go up a little bit because that's the 11 months, but we're trying to get closer to what we're actually billing out. So, and this doesn't get us there, but it gets us a step, $550,000 closer to it. And even with dropping the revenue, we still have a transfer out number of $44,000. So.
City of Danbury in charge this past year. Can we expect two bills next year?
So we're, whether or not, say Danbury doesn't get us a bill for three months, the 950 we have budgeted, I'm going to book a journal before and go, it's a pay. We know we owe them something. So we will put that on the books to not, we're not going to like give back the 950. So we will put, unless the bill comes in less than 950, we're going to charge at least 950 to the fiscal year that ends June 30. And if we get the bill and it's 980 and we pay it, then it'll exceed the budget by 30,000. We'll make it up elsewhere, I'm sure. But you know, like, the only thing that speaks about not having the bill is if we know for sure that the bill was a million dollars, Tom would probably take that 44,000 we have in transfer out, make that number zero and put it in the sewer, but we don't know. And we don't know how much of that number that the guy said is higher than 950 is. So every year we get the bill, it's, because they're supposed to do it in September, it's an estimated bill. And it adjusts for the prior year estimate. So if we get a $980,000 bill, 100,000 of that could have been to fix the prior year estimate. You know, so it's, they're always chasing their tail with it. The estimate for this current bill should be a lot closer, I would think, because we're almost done with it, you know, like they have a lot more data. But for the fact that they haven't gotten it out yet, makes me concerned. They haven't looked at that data yet. They're still trying to go back to the old data, you know?
Well, that's scary because you have enough to deal with the unknown.
Yeah. The flip side of it is, we haven't had Danbury sitting on our money for the last nine months. And I'm shocked that they didn't get us something earlier.
It's true. And they're now finally getting to it.
Yeah.
So the 2.9 on this month's sewer is really more like 3.0 because you know you're going to be putting $950,000.
Yeah.
So do we have any idea when their plant is going to be finished and we'll get a bill for that?
Again, he's like, oh, I owe everybody a meeting. I got, you know, and I just.
Again, he's like, oh, I, I owe everybody a meeting. I got, you know, and I just reemphasize to him, it's like. You, you can't finalize what you're doing and give us a bill that's now due in a month. I say there's a political process we have to go through. We need time to process it, figure out where our financing is coming from. You're gonna have to give us, you know, six months ahead of time. When you know what you're doing as to when now we gotta start paying back. The, the biggest thing is they didn't wanna float everybody for the twenty years. So. I, I really can't say how they're proposing to do it.
Aware of it.
But I've been, I, I let them know, you gotta let us know, you gotta give us lead time, not only us, the other towns.
Do they anticipate when the project will be completed?
You know what, I'm, I'm just, just don't try to get the bill. He said he's gonna give you next week, so I, I don't, I don't expect too much. They're, they're getting close. I know they're getting close.
So the other thing that Tom and I talked about this weekend, it's somewhat related to the budget, so bring it up in this bar. Um, when we increased the water rate last year, we did a three year instead of a five year. And we talked about we should look at it each year. I think when we look at it, because we know Danbury project's coming up. I'm just, put it out there now to put in your heads. When we look at the water rates to make sure the water rate is still good. Before then, I think we have to start looking at the sewer rate.
Yeah.
Even though sewer may not need the money this second, at some point Danbury's gonna send us a twelve to fifteen million dollar bill. And we're gonna finance it, however we finance it, and our debt's gonna go up. So even if we don't have it by the time that we look at the water rate, we should really look at the sewer rate and go. Instead of going, so for twelve years or whenever they split the water to sewer, the sewer rate's never been adjusted because it's been enough. It's hard to spend fifteen million dollars or twelve million dollars, whatever the number is, and not make an adjustment. So what Tom and I were talking about, we spoke to Dan about it. It's time to probably do something with sewer. We're not there yet, but just to let the board know that we're gonna start looking at that sooner than later. That even if we don't know what that number is. Instead of going zero, 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 jump, it might be time to start.
Like three percent a year type of thing.
We also have a sewer.
Yeah. And sewer has a positive cash balance. That's why we haven't looked at it. Because of the assessment money coming in. But we owe. Assessments on our debt far longer than we're probably gonna be getting major assessment money. So what we'll probably do is take that cash balance, not borrow as much when we owe Danbury money. But now we need to bump our collections up to cover that debt that we borrowed that money from. So it's, it's just something to start thinking about that. It's probably time to put a modest increase out there on sewer instead of having. These huge steps.
Like three eight point fives in a row. You start going.
Yeah.
A little earlier and a little less, you're gonna get to the same place.
Yeah. If we knew sooner what Bergstrom was gonna turn into. Instead of doing three eight point, uh, zero, zero, three eight point fives. You could have probably done five fives and gone, and you end up in the same spot, and then people's bills don't jump as much. So that's what we're just kinda talking about. It's maybe more of a gradual increase to take care of what we know is coming.
Mm hmm.
But without Danbury setting the sewer bills or knowing exactly what our allocation's gonna be. Um, cause Danbury also, I think, added to the allocation percentage to give rough people allocation. We're not sure if they gave them some of theirs or added to it. If they added to the total allocation, specials percentage drops.
Right, although not by much.
Not by much, but it's.
But it's something.
Yeah. Um, so, but so it just, we're not there yet. We're not asking for anything yet, but.
Soon.
Yeah.
They're gonna go.
Probably should have done it a couple of years ago. We probably should do it small a few years back and just kinda start. We know there's a, a fifteen million dollar, who knows, maybe eighteen. We know it's coming.
Right. Whether it's twelve, fifteen or eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, we know we're two, not two.
But if we're, have money and we borrow. Half or less than half of what that bill is, and we know we financed that over twenty years. Maybe instead of dividing the cliffs, maybe we could do. Ten years of threes. And go, that's gonna cover us. We're just gonna glide up to that path of where we need to be instead of shooting up there, you know?
And.
So we'll see, we don't know at the number there yet.
And sewer still has a declining block. So once you get up to sixty five thousand gallons, the rate is lower. Now we balance that out on the water side. Where over a five year period, we raise that in steps. So that now it's the same dollar amount per thousand gallons. There's no declining. And on, on the sewer side, we should probably, you know, uh, you know, make that part of it as well.
Yeah. It's time to look, even if we didn't increase the rate, it's time to look at how we bill out sewer anyway. But water's had so many projects with it, it's gotten all the attention and sewer's been. Going good, so we've left it alone. So, but now it's time to give sewer a little attention, I think. So. But that's aside from this, but we didn't adjust any of that in here. It's just, we know it's coming.
So the sixty seven hundred dollar electric bill we have to pay, where's that going, this year or next?
Uh, it'll go in this year.
Yeah.
The sixty seven hundred's the.
From the summit?
From the summit.
Oh, well, that, that's what I'm, I'm wondering too. I'm, I'm, I'm anticipating. That that is all gonna be all ours. But I don't know if ever source. I don't know if there's a way they're gonna not bill us the entire amount. I assume we're gonna take on the whole sixty seven hundred. If they can only go back so far.
Yeah, because if that resource did it without.
Right, then it may be less, but I'm gonna anticipate it's the sixty seven hundred.
We're gonna ask that question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could we buy from Constellation or somebody else?
Yeah, so our rate could have been a lot lower. Too, so the bill may not be as much, but we'll.
Yeah.
We'll get there when we get there. But even if that bill comes in two months from now, if we know it's for prior, we'll put it for twenty four.
Book it to this current.
Yeah. So. Um, and you'll see, like we talked about for penalties, bond and penalties, that bumped up to forty thousand. Bond interest went up fifteen thousand. Lean fees, we didn't have anything in from now it's twenty. Through May. Um, penalties we've collected just under forty six thousand. So I went to forty, so I'm still being conservative there.
Yeah.
Bond interest we've collected fifty three thousand. And I kept, I bumped that up to forty five. Lean fees twenty nine thousand. So I put twenty. And permits and installation, we've actually collected sixty two thousand. But permits and insulation is a hard one. Usually penalties can jump around some, but usually at the same people that are going with permits and insulation. You can have one year that you do a lot and another you don't do a lot. So again, we try to be slow in. With it. Um, so, but even by bumping those up, we were able to drop the sewer assessment. Um, another thirty five, like forty. It allowed us to go down three fifty because initially we were looking at going down three hundred. So, but.
Okay. Uh, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Uh, I approve that we approved the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five sewer budget, an amount of four million. Uh, twelve thousand dollars. Thank you. Any, uh, any further discussion? Eighteen seconds. Other discussions? I did say that right, didn't I? Okay, I'll trade them as all in favor of CI.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Brad. Got your support? We're all thank Tom.
Just a couple items. Uh, I know it, these are the last meeting or the meeting before you asked us about. Uh, just providing an update on any injuries or safety related. So we, we had our town safety meeting and. One of the, uh, report first, report of injury was one of our maintainers from last quarter. No lost time. It was a lower arm injury and, um, like a sprain, it came under the sprains and strings category. And it was, uh, due to, I think, lifting a manhole cover. So I just wanted to provide the update since you, you had all asked for that. Um, two other things. I noticed, uh, Maple one A, well. The drawdown's starting to increase as we were good and it looked like we were on par to get through the summer. I, I was getting a little bit concerned that, you know, the drawdowns may really start kicking in. Through July, August, September. So, um, I spoke with S P Church about, uh. Uh, looking into redeveloping one, I doing a cleaning, chemical cleaning on it. Spoke to Justin about, uh, having a Eureka reservoir at the ready. Um, if we redevelop it, he's available, I think, in early in July or mid-July. We'd be down for, with that well, we'd be down for maybe a week and a half. And I think the Eureka reservoir could, you know, basically, uh. You know, cover us for that period. And then we get one A back up to where, where it's better, we'll, we'll get through the summer with no issues, so.
One A is one of the new wells?
Uh, one A is one of the two new wells, yes.
So we haven't done this before.
No, we have, we have, yes, we've done it twice already since I'm here. Um, it would be something I would really wanna do like in. March, like April or May, or I would wanna do after the season, but I don't really feel comfortable letting it sit through the summer.
When's the last time we searched that?
We did that one not that long ago. I think it was February of. Might have been February twenty three. So we're only like a year and four months into that.
That's right.
Two A is doing better. Now, of course, when Bergstrom is available to us. That's gonna definitely then relieve the pressure on the Maple wells. Um, but yeah, I, I, that's why I thought originally, I'll be good with one A through the summer and. But the, the drawdown started really kinda increasing over the, the last month, six weeks. And I'm like, you know, I don't really wanna. Get into a, a hot spell and extended dry period and, and you know, and, and that well's not putting out what it needs to.
Are we gonna start up the old walls?
Yeah, we would start up the, um, you know what, I think we might be able to just live off of, uh, Eureka for that one, one and a half weeks. I mean, well, one A is putting out. Vary it from when the tank's high to the tank's low. I'll just pick a round number, three hundred and fifty gallons a minute in the course of a day, so. Eureka should be able to do that without any issues.
Is there any problem to run one of the old walls, just to?
No, 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 it could be run. And we've run it a couple of times. We've done it, we've run it.
Well, I think maybe we should look at that, just to, you know.
Yeah, we can.
How that is, it's going all the time.
Yeah. The old well's definitely put down, put out less.
Yeah.
And I think Ed probably limited them. I don't think we let him, I don't think we pushed them to their, to their limits. He had a number in mind that he wanted to maintain, and that's what we ended up doing.
So you have that ability to do it, is what you're saying. Sorry, your rate can produce us a lot more.
Well, it's the reservoir, you know, which isn't the best water. Right, but I think it's early in the season, so it probably won't be quality wise that bad as it would be, say, in September. And again, I think we got a short window, probably like a, a week and a half time where one A would be down.
The harder it gets, it works, it's gonna be.
Correct.
You're gonna have a stinkin' boy.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, I'm thinking, I'm looking at the well as well, so. Um, anyway, that's coming probably by next month. We'll have a better idea when that is. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention, I don't know how far it's going, but it's, I've heard about it from. A year or so ago, um, a potential main and sewer main extension on Taylor Road. Where Draper's building left off at, uh, number forty nine. Around that right corner is fifty three Taylor. And I think they may be looking at, it's like, I mean, a two and a half acre lot.
How many houses was that?
I, I don't know how many houses.
The other one come across the town.
Sorry.
The other half of it's that sewer at the other end.
Uh, true, yes. I, I think they're, they're probably closer from coming up that way.
Right, they came across.
Yeah, they came across up by number sixty eight or seventy two somewhere in there. And I think they serve down to the condos. I think it's closer from, from Taylor, I mean, from forty nine Taylor. But anyway, we'll look at that. I've just given you a heads up that we may be seeing a main extension and a sewer extension. I guess T, T, TD and Sons owns the property. So I think. They mentioned this to me maybe a year and a half, two years ago, but nothing came of it. Now I got a call from their engineer saying, hey, you know. He wanted to know about separation distance between the sewer main and the water main, what we would require.
You could show them that.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the literature says ten foot separation horizontal, which. You go out into any busy road and it's closer than ten feet.
You can show.
You could show. Yeah. And it's all rock, but putting it in one wider trench may mess up the traffic pattern more so than.
Right.
It may be cheaper for him to do it that way. So we'll just have to see what works best for us. And I know there's gonna be rock.
What happened after you wrote?
Uh, force me. Well, I'll let Kelly go get to that, I think, on his, you know, you're talking about the patch we did out there? Yeah, when we get to supervisor, you, you've got that on your list. Uh, but anyway, that was the last item for me on, on director's report.
Uh, under old business, am I your replacements?
Again, I'll pass that to Kelly to give the update.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh, we're down to a hundred and eighty eight downtown, and that includes pits. So we are gaining on it. And the Stony Hill area, there's eighteen, Stony Hill area, of course, it just wells. Uh, but of the one eighty eight, probably forty of them are pits. So we're getting as many as we can, that the appointments are starting to slack off. We're gonna. Pull up the flyers again and try to get that moving again. But we're, we're making that play. I mean. We, they, they did the building this past month and, uh, got a lot of high usage and stuff like that. So that kinda took away a little bit.
Does it look like more, um, bad ones are coming in?
Yeah, there's a few.
A few, not, like. Not a lot.
I, I noticed some of the orders are coming in that it, they've only been estimated one or two cycles. So you know they're starting to, starting to fail. So I, I, I think I gotta get into one of the buildings that I think has about ten hours of use in it. But we have five of them to be changed. I'm gonna check the dates. If the dates are close to what we've been pulling out, we'll just get them all at one time. But they, they will increase. Alright, alright.
PC Capital Project?
Alright, as far as capital projects, Bergstrom, uh, status, we're at about fifty six percent, uh, of the total paid. And they're about sixty six percent through the construction schedule. Um, recent work was, uh, pouring the interior of the building concrete equipment pads. Some exterior equipment pads, um, final grading around the backwash tanks. And, uh, the exterior masonry walls. Um, some upcoming work. Uh, I think tomorrow the filter tanks are to be placed, uh, with a crane inside the building. Which will allow the, uh, the masonry crew to start working on the interior walls. Um, and then of course they'll have to coordinate with electrical, the rough electrical and plumbing with those walls. Um, and a pressure test, not that it's critical right now, but I think they're looking at, uh, figuring out, uh, pressure testing the water main and the sewer main. So that, that Bergstrom. Um, uh, sub area thirteen, uh, of the sanitary sewer. Uh, the, basically what's left is the heavy cleaning and then the TV camera work that goes along with those sections. So, um, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from, from them as far as scheduling. Likely it's gonna carry into after July first, which is why I, I kinda threw a budget number in there to kinda cover that for that, for the coming budget. Uh, and last, uh, the Skata project, uh, I got the ninety percent design plans and specs from, from right here. So we're going through those now. We'll come up with whatever final comments and, um. You know, we should be going out with plans and specs for bid, I would think, like they presented. Probably by the end of summer, we should be, we should be there.
On the, uh, thirteen areas, was there anything that major, uh. Stood out, was there bad manhole?
I, I didn't, I didn't get, uh, well, we know we got some manholes that are leaking, and they're in swampy areas. So that one's gonna be a pain to do. But as far as like the analysis of all the pipes, I, I haven't gotten a report yet. They're doing kinda all the field work and then I'll get. I'll get something back. I'm sure there's gonna be some pipe we're gonna end up lining. And then again, we're gonna have. There's probably through those two swampy sections, we may have a total of. Eight manholes that may have to get raised. And again, we might wanna do what we did at the railroad is just get them raised, rope upgrade. It's gonna be a matter of who's gonna get in there to do it and how they're gonna get in there to do it, so.
Excellent. Uh, PFAS cross-sectional thing, anything?
Yeah, uh, so I, I got our claims forms, uh, for both three M and Dupont submitted. All that was online and our, our, it, it's acknowledged online now that they have been submitted. So I haven't heard anything more about how they're going to give you out money. I think the way they were going to do it was the money's going to go out sooner than later. Uh, but we'll see. The other thing I'm going to do though, I haven't done yet, um, is, is a separate application. It's called a special needs. Uh, where if you had to make special adjustments because of, uh, dealing with PFAS. So we had a change order on Bergstrom for piping and the engineer, Marius reminded me, the engineering that went into review and all of that. Um, you know, we put some extra money into prepping that building in case we have to do treatment. Now whether or not they'll accept that because we don't know if we have to do the treatment yet or not. But at least I'm going to get that application in there for consideration. So.
Have you finalized that number yet?
It looks like, I, I, I think I heard something today, from my, from my perspective, I think the numbers are fine. But the actual final proclamation date is going to be, I think, June twenty-fourth, so in another two weeks. I don't see any changes coming at this point, so that four parts per trillion for those. For those, for the PFOA and PFAS, I think we're stuck with. If it was six or eight, we probably would have been okay. Five or seven or ten years from now, it's going to be two, you know that. Uh, yeah.
You know, when, when you argue, well, do you need it or not?
Right.
You don't need it today, you're going to need it.
And the one thing they changed with the rule was you got to get your testing done and all that, like within a three-year period. And whatever treatment you may have to put together, you got a five year, so. The deadline will be twenty twenty-nine to have whatever treatment in place. So that's it.
Excellent. You took supervisor's report.
How, how the building coming down at Bergstrom?
Uh, good. Um, like I said, the tanks are going to get put inside the building. Some of the exterior masonry walls are in. The slabs are all poured, concrete, um, equipment pads have been poured. The backwash and the back, uh, recycled tanks have been kind of graded and a lot of tough work is in. Um, I, like I said, next steps, I think, the tanks going in tomorrow. The masonry crew asked if they could work on Saturday. I checked with Park and Rick, there's nothing major going on. So I said, yeah, go ahead. Um, there, there's not going to be much to what they're doing anyway. But once those big interior walls are done, then you can start getting the roof trusses in on that side of the building. And then you can start going with the rest of the metal building, so in the next four to six weeks, I think you're going to start to see a building.
The rest of it's metal, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just asked Tom, they, they put up twelve-inch concrete block in the front wall. Why didn't we just go with a split face block or something? Now we're going to be covered up with metal over that? It's like redundancy. I don't think it's explosion proof, I mean, twelve-inch block wall with, uh, the cavities being filled with concrete and rebar. Seems like over the ice, personally.
Noted.
Better building with suffice, you know?
Yeah.
Well, Tom is, we only got the footprint, we never saw what the building was. We didn't have a witness there.
Right, so.
I think it does.
I think we had pictures of it, it's in the plans.
There was pictures.
Because we picked the colors, remember? I don't know when we did that.
Yeah. Okay, so you thoroughly supervisor.
Uh, Pete, you brought up the, the sewer break on Payne Road with, uh, the six inch pressure line coming up out of, uh, Payne Road. One of the gaskets broke. They, when they installed it, there was a hole to gasket. Uh, and it slowly started to leak, but it's, uh, you know, we really didn't have any solids. We had water coming out. We tried to put it off until after the school year, but there's a new, it'll be blocked in both ways. It's like the Danbury used our system. But, um, last weekend, the week, whenever it was, the weekend before, it finally really broke the asphalt. There was a lot of, a lot of, uh, water coming out, so we, uh, I got ahold of, uh, tanker. It between your back to truck and then right down the street, right around the corner, they were able to, to, uh. Get the system going. Uh, we, we shut them down, probably, well, we, I shouldn't say we shut them down because we never shut down. We, uh, we brought in Penbrook as like a holding tank and had them stand by. Uh, we, we use a tank full that we stored it in and then once the repair was made, they dumped it back in. But it was, it was twelve feet deep. I mean, it was a hundred and forty-four inches. I looked at the tape. Uh, and it wasn't leaking back, but it was just a steady leak. It was holding water. It was, uh, right next to the mains, main line. It's coming out right here by, by the Jehovah's Witness building, but they put a, uh.
Bill clamp.
Bill clamp repaired a couple of years on it and, uh, they had it back home by nine o'clock that night.
Was the ground staple underneath it?
Under the main.
Under the main because we had problems with that.
Yeah.
Above it, but the water was coming down. It's using that's a current drain.
Yeah.
And I didn't mind off the road. I wouldn't have had anything to do with it.
I don't know. It was pretty solid, but it, it, there was no break in the pipe. It was definitely, I, I just think it was a road gasket. Uh, when they installed it and it just got worse and worse and worse. Uh, but, you know, like I said, we tried to put it off, but there was no foot. Uh, we had it, you know, three cops, I guess they Penbrooke, I haven't gotten the bill yet from the kicker.
Big detour.
Yeah, it was a big detour.
We all did the job.
Yeah, they were, they rented out there in no time.
Make sure to do the next day.
We did end up losing more of the road than what we wanted, so we actually got into the, I guess that'd be the North Cal Lane, probably halfway. So again, that's why you see the path so big and then in the fall, once it settled down, then, uh, probably have an American tape. And it just occurred to occur to that one stretch there. Uh, we also had a service leak on Honey Hollow. We took care of that. Uh, we got our quarter of cleaning done on all of our wet wells. And leak survey has been completed. The only thing I'm waiting on are the parts for that hydrant on, uh, depot. It's been a month that they've been ordered. They expect it any day. I'm just waiting. But other than that, you, you know, the system is, is, uh, is pretty tight. I mean, they, uh, they did the whole system, a couple of areas, they heard noise, they hit a little bit on that hydrant. Uh, this, this one was on Honey Hollow, uh, they thought it was a main break. They were getting noise, they correlated it. It was a service line about four feet away from where it was. It wasn't even shown, but they heard it. Uh, other than that, I don't know because they were, the, the water system's pretty tight.
Any further questions for him? All right, I've seen nothing on our docket here. I took the motion to adjourn, so look.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. It is four thirty-one PM. Thank you, everybody.